I'd like to say a few words. So this is the start of budget process in which each principal and school council will present her budget, his budget, to the school committee. I just want to thank, I want to thank, let me just say, the budget process is a long process. And so when we start out developing a budget and you start to think about the needs of your schools, we become very, very excited. And now we're at a point where maybe that excitement gets, it's still there, but the reality set in. And so it can be a little bit difficult and can be a little bit challenging at times, especially when the principals get together with central office and we have to start thinking about ways to, I love to say, impact the budget. And so there's a lot of sensitivity that takes place. You don't see it, but it happens behind closed doors. This is an open process. And so I want to thank the principals and all of the school councils. So I'm going to thank the president and school council, and Christina, and all the teachers that work on the budget. I want to thank Deidre and Nancy Lysek. They're trying to make everything ready for us. Angela and Karen for meeting within each principal. And I think I mentioned before, you had each principal meet with central office to go through the packaging around in front of you. So Christina is going to model for all of our principals. In fact, you would be modeling for everyone else. So I'm sure this is going to be terrific. I would say we're trying to be very, very open. This is probably, how many times for me? Nine, twelve, thirteen, fourteen? I think this is my 14th or 15th budget in my career. And I don't think, is there ever a time when it wasn't challenging? We have needs in a district, and you go with the sink. If you walked through the classroom, you saw the Elmo, I mean, everything else seemed like it was from the 1960s. Okay? And it's not quite what we have in mind when we think about 21st century schools. So we have a process in a format that Christina is going to follow. All of our principals will follow the same format. Christina's going to be the driver. I want to keep quiet. Okay? Truly, I would defer to the Deidre at any time during the budget process. So if there's something needs to be added there, or they want to reform the school committee, just feel free to just do it, okay? Christina?
Okay. I would like to formally introduce my school council here this evening. Chrissy Berry, Christine Berry is a first grade teacher here. Peter McClure, parent of a third grader. And Jesse Craddock, physical education teacher. I'm going to share with you a budget that I've prepared. I have a prepared presentation to help me focus on the proper use of my voice. So if you want to stop me at any one point, just let me know, okay? So that I can ensure that I meet all your needs and any questions that you may have along the way. I'm going to present to you this evening the FY13 Brezner Hand School Level Services Budget. It's important to me that our students are consistently at the forefront of our thinking in our plan. This means that we need to focus on the overall well-being of each and every child, the environment in which we educate our students, as well as the environment in which our teachers and staff work in each and every day. To that end, it is imperative that the budget reflects the comprehensive needs of our students, the required resources needed to support the core curriculum, as well as enhance student learning and achievement. It's my goal to maintain class sizes within class size guidelines. This is very important to me, my teachers, and staff. It is imperative that we continue to support the inclusion initiative. Yet, it is becoming more and more apparent that the vision we have for this model requires modification as we do not have the resources to fully support it. This level services budget includes core curriculum and other comprehensive programs, including art, music, wellness, and technology, as well as library, health services, student services, and special education. Additionally, this budget reflects the operation in maintenance of the plan, school administration, and hero. My focus is to provide you with an overview of the FY13 budget and the budget development process. I have developed this budget section by section, line item by line item, while reevaluating the current budget. This budget is an accurate reflection of needed resources based on actual costs, as well as a projection of costs for some resources. As you know, the current Brezner Hand School Improvement Plan is in alignment with the district's strategic point which provides us with a vision and a direction. Hence, we took the SIP and the School Improvement Plan, which includes our system's key initiatives, comprehensive literacy, mathematics, and inclusionary best practices, into account to move our school further along the teaching and learning continuum. I have consulted with the Brezner Hand School Council regarding the overall budget and key folks regarding each component, including literacy and math coaches, the technology integrator, school nurse, the building leadership team, our central office administrators, to name a few. As you review the budget, you will notice there are line items that have decreased and others that have increased significantly. These decreases and increases are reflective of a shift in needs based on where we are with our initiatives, the newly adopted Common Core standards, contractual obligations regarding salaries, the decrease of a third grade section, the addition of a second grade section, as well as intervention needs. This school educates approximately 500-plus elementary students in grades 1, 2, 3. I am projecting for 181st graders, 178 second graders, and 154 third graders. Those numbers are fluid. We know that each and every year we have children transition in throughout the summer as well as throughout the school year, as well as children transitioning out. As a result, I am proposing that we maintain nine first grade sections for an average class size of 1925 students. Increase second grade by one section for an average class size of 20. And decrease third grade by one section for an average class size of 22.
How many sections would be accepted in third grade?
There will be nine in first and second, in eight, excuse me, in seven in third. We currently have eight. These projections fall within the limits of the recommended class size guidelines. Please note that the additional .5 FTE for first and second grade includes a literacy support teacher. So on the budget detail that you have, on, it's the first page, but it's page number three, you will notice the FTE for grade 1. In grade 2, it says 9.5. It's nine first and second grade classroom teachers. The .5 for each of those grades is reflecting a literacy support teacher. And that's where it's coming out of the budget. So in other words, it does not reflect an additional .5 classroom teacher. Going to move on a little bit to the budget detail for grades 1, 2, and 3 beyond enrollment sections. There is an increase in textbooks at all three grade levels. This is to ensure the acquisition of literacy resources needed to enhance our literacy closet collection, classroom libraries, and books to align with the new Common Core standards. There is a significant increase at the second grade level as a result of a proposed additional classroom. As you start in classrooms this evening, an incredible amount of supplies and materials are needed for each of the content areas, as well as curriculum-based resources, curriculum-based materials and books. Additionally, I have included funding at all three grade levels for the acquisition of an anti-bullying curriculum as a result of the new law. The review of the anti-bullying curriculum is being done at the district level in a final determination has not yet been made in regards to an actual program. However, resources are being reviewed and a determination will be made hopefully in the near future for the upcoming school year. The next line item I would like to draw your attention to is software. This is the first time as a district that I have included math software for intervention purposes at each of the grade levels. This is a direct result of needing additional resources to support and enhance learning and instruction. We have calculated $5,000 as a need for three grade levels, which has been divided amongst all three grades. I anticipate there will be a need to replace some listening centers at each of the three grades. The centers are utilized on a daily basis by the children. They have a lot of use, a lot of wear and tear. At this current moment, I don't need any listening centers, but I'm confident they won't all make it through the next school year. On page four, you'll notice technology has an increase on the software and computer equipment line items. There is a need to acquire new resources to enhance technology integration and student learning. Computer equipment includes monitors, mice, a photo scanner, headphones, and a video starting kit. The technology integrator has requested new chairs for the lab. That's, the current chairs are on rollers, and we are sitting on them right now. These chairs are not appropriate for six, seven, and eight-year-old children. I would also like to point out that the form of our money was used to support the technology budget in the recent past. And given last year's budget shortfall, technology funds for software for software were eliminated altogether. Hence, the significant increase.
Can I just follow up on that, Christina?
Sure.
So we're looking at B4 under technology. You see computer software under adopted FY12 as zero. And then you see the increase of $10,245. That's not to say that last year there were not computer software purchases. They were just charged to the ARRA money, which was the second year of ARRA, which was lost for FY13. So that's not to say that we're purging it down for technology at the Brezner Hand School. The funding source was different, and it has been eliminated.
But we also make it work. Often, we had asked for it. It was okay.
Deidre, is that something that was done throughout the whole budget wherever ARRA money was reused? We've eliminated them from this budget?
The funding source is gone, but the need is still there. So you'll see zero in FY12, but in the budget for FY13?
For a comparison point of view, it's not easy for us to be able to say, well, you see here is a 100% increase when in fact you did spend some money.
I thought.
And so, you know, how much was actually spent? Regardless of the source, I think it would be important for us to see so that we can see how or...
And what?
What was purchased in?
I think you listed those ARRA budgets.
Art and music, and yes, from page four. And you will notice that both art and music have decreased slightly. Wellness and special education remain the same in regards to supplies and materials in the needs. Not, when I say slight decreases or slight increases or significant, I'm not referring to salaries at this point. I'm referring to supplies and materials and resources utilized in the classroom each day. The library budget was also impacted last year. And you will notice, note that library is on the top of page five. And as a result, there is a significant increase in textbooks this year. With 500 students circulating in and out of the library on a weekly basis, along with teachers and staff utilizing the resources, there is an ongoing need to update the collection. This also includes books that will support curriculum that will be aligned with the Common Core standards. Furthermore, for the first time, it has been recommended by our former librarian, Lynn Cody, to begin an ebook collection. And she has recommended that we allot $1,500 for that. Continuing on to instructional materials. Instructional materials has an overall decrease for the upcoming school year. The textbook line item includes professional resources for teachers, primarily for the implementation of the responsive classroom approach. This approach will provide students, teachers, and staff with a foundation in a common language around expectations, standards, social skills, and behavior. I envision with an approach such as the responsive classroom, a greater focus will be on teaching and learning and less of a focus on behavior and discipline. Our teachers and staff are working so hard to create a safe and respectful learning environment, but there is a missing link. I envision the responsive classroom approach to be just that link to complete the chain, if you will. The resources needed for student services remains the same, while health services is decreasing. And that's simply based on the amount of materials that we, our resources in the nurses' office, that we have utilized this year in doubling, actually projected, and created an itemized budget for exactly what she will need next year. On the bottom of page six, under school administration, you will recognize the increase of printing. Although it is not a huge increase, I wanted to point out that the printing costs have increased as a result of us needing to print or have a local company print progress report envelopes. Additionally, the office is in need of a new fax machine, which is reflected in computer equipment as a result of not having a line item for general office equipment. I anticipate this summary of some highlighted points of interest has provided you with an understanding of our school's needs, how the budget has been developed, and an understanding of the budget itself. I'm sure you have questions. I am happy to answer any questions that we may have. And if I don't have the information for you, I'll be sure to get the information to you. Deanne?
Just speaking to the special education salary decrease of $78,000, is that something that we can probably see an increase in the mullin as a result of that?
I can't speak to that. I...
Yes.
Students transition from grade 3 to grade 4 in their associated services.
That's my interpretation. And one more question. You may have mentioned, although you said you weren't really speaking of salaries, the 118% increase...
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Student services?
Yes.
Actually, Deidre looks pretty familiar.
Definitely is an issue. There's an error there. You see in M1, he's speaking to student services. We have one professional staff member in student services. In FY12, there's one for FY13. And clearly, that additional $80,000 is not in the right spot. So we need to take a look at that.
Good catch. I need to catch that today when I review this. Sorry.
That's okay. So what's in student services for these segments? That's what needs to be determined. That 148 in FY13 is incorrect. It's the same person in FY12 to FY13.
It looks like there's at least two salaries there.
Exactly. So the guidance counselor or someone who's in student services may belong somewhere else in the budget. That's not to say that there's an additional salary in the budget. It just may be reported in the incorrect spot.
That's something that Deidre and I meant about today. In all of our sites, student services is typically where the adjustment counselor and the school psychologist are budgeted. And some sites you're going to see in the budget only have a school adjustment counselor. Some sites have the school adjustment counselor and the school psychologist. So I have an upcoming meeting with Nancy Lysek and Deidre to make that consistent across the board so that this line item will carry the school adjustment counselors and the school psychologists.
Typically for Brezner Hand, we only carry the school adjustment counselor.
I don't know if I can get this over here.
Sorry, Mr. Shale.
No, you didn't. I did. I'd like to go back to the grade 1 and grade 2, .5 literacy teacher. Could you tell me about that? Would this person be working directly in the classroom with students? Is it more of a coaching position? How does it fit in with what we currently have?
It's already what we currently have. This is not new. This is one of our teachers that works for the Title I teams.
Emily?
No, Emily is one of our coaches. I believe this is Sue Jay-Z X. Savely. She's a member of the Title I team.
Because she services grade 1, and she services grade 2. She's got RTE half for grade 1, half for grade 2.
So I didn't know how to be distracted if I was going to... I was distracted by what was happening. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
So, yes.
So it's not a new position?
It's already what we have in place. It's just hard we planned a new position because there was an enough salary money under the Title I.
Now, does this person work directly with students in the classroom?
Directly, with students in the classroom and out of the classroom. This person also is a reading rehabilitation.
So she's part of your RTI?
Yes.
Okay.
Cheryl, that position used to be funded under Title I. And we've lost some of our Title I funding. And so it was last year, wasn't it, Deidre? We picked up her salary, so this will be our second year. And she's part of the LIT support team.
Yes.
Are we actively pursuing, or maybe actually any of the administrators, are we actively pursuing any potential grants? Or anything that we're losing to make up for what we're losing grants on?
You know, it's a tough one, quite honestly. We have entitlement grants. You'll see that in your appendix, identifying the entitlement grants that were entitled to. From a competitive grant standpoint, Newburyport typically is at a disadvantage because of our demographics. And typically, your competitive grants are awarded based on the demographics of the community. It has been years since we have been awarded a competitive grant. And all the work that had gone into the PEP grant, for example, that we've gone after for a couple of years from that perspective, has not been awarded to Newburyport, even though there has been a yeoman's effort. And the grant is a substantial grant, very, very well done, and very well looked upon. But again, because the demographic is competitively, we typically don't get awarded those grants.
How about changes in entitlement grants? Can we, is there any buzz about any potential changes? Or should we pretty much assume?
Level funding is what it's been over the past couple of years, if anything. There are a little bit of monies that are allotted, but nothing major, if you will. Our focus in regards to anything from an entitlement standpoint really has been a push from the legislative perspective to give us more money in circuit breaker, or give us more money in chapter 7, to give us more money in local aid, and, you know, deal with the entitlement competitive grant perspective. But from a local aid and circuit breaker perspective, those have been our focuses.
We just talked about Title I. From what I've read, I don't see an increase in Title I. I don't, I see a little service budget, but I'm not quite sure what that means in terms of the state government. Usually what happens is you add in charter schools in Massachusetts, that money does come from someplace. And so, one of the things about Title I, you're held almost at 85%. So what do we get? $900,000 or so? I'm not quite sure how much we...
And what?
Yeah, how much?
$221,000.
I think it's 90%.
Yeah, we got about $221,000 this year for Title I. One of the things I would just add to what Deidre said about entitlement grants is they've been, not only decreased, but some of them have been discontinued. So, you know, we used to receive an entitlement grant for technology in the district. It was called Enhancing Technologies. That was discontinued two years ago. Last year, we lost our safe and drug free money. That was also discontinued. So, you know, we used to receive five or six entitlement grants, and we're now to three. So, you know, the money is just when when they funded a lot of the ARRA money, some of the Title I money, a big bank of money, was distributed out through ARRA. So you still received the money, but in a different place at that time. So it's tough, and it is hard. Money's thin.
The same is true for special education. I managed three entitlement grants. And when we did have ARRA money, one of those grants was discontinued. It was restored this year for the years because ARRA was discontinued. But it was restored at a lower rate. And of the three special entitlement grants, only one I can count on level funding. The other two have consistently decreased each year.
I've heard level funding mentioned a couple of times. And I know when we talk about level funding from the big budget, level funding does represent an increase. When you speak to level funding, you're not speaking to that cost of operation. You're just talking about the same dollar, which is not going to go as far. So technically, just like to a...
The reason why I mentioned about being held almost, you usually don't get your Title I entitlements until close to July. So if Title I does go down, can't go down more than 15%. So just do the math, 15% of your entitlement is allowed to pick up a salary of $22,000, $23,000. That's what's getting its worst case in him.
It has, Title I has consistently been reduced over the last four years. Every year, we have a little bit less than we...
Angela, can you share with us where Title I is being used this year and for what?
Absolutely. About 98% of Title I money is used for salaries for our LIT support teachers. There's a little bit of money that we use for supplies and materials, minimal, like $2,000 might go to supplies and material to support the work that our literacy support teachers are doing. So this year, we didn't even allot any of the money for professional development. Sometimes we'll use some of the Title I money for professional development for our reading recovery teachers because that needs to be ongoing. And we trained a lot of our staff in level literacy intervention recently. So, but this year, we paid for the professional development from the Swayze Foundation because the money was so tight to make the salaries to be able to reach. We're trying to expand some of the FTEs even because when we talk about our Title I teachers, we have five teachers who are in our LIT support program for early intervention. One of them is paid from the LEI, as you just heard about. We have two. We have two other full-time teachers, 1.5 and 1.8. So, we don't even have five full-time people. So, we, you know, really work hard to make that money go as far as we can. And the majority of it is spent on the salaries of the teachers in this position.
For the...
Oh, for the Brown and the Breslin.
So, those are the great roles. And is it all reading support? Or there's some math support built into that?
It's, this year, it was all literacy support. Last year, we piloted a little bit of math support, but we were stretched too thin. There's just not enough people to do that justice. And so, that's why we're really looking at other ways to provide some math intervention in the classroom. And you saw that in one of Christina's line items for software around that. So, we're examining other ways that we might be able to approach that. You know, I can't speak highly enough about the teachers who are on our Lit Support Team. But, you know, I was just looking at student rosters for the second half of the year. I've just told you about their FTEs. You know, they're servicing about 60, 65 students twice a year. So, they're just as full as they can be.
Angela mentioned the term LEA, just for your education. It's not more educational jargon, sorry. LEA is the Local Education Agency. And basically, that means with the budget you have in front of you, it's the Local Education Agency Budget, LEA Budget. It's a DES term, so FYI.
And it just rolls around.
OMG.
Thank you for that.
Can you talk a little bit about, first of all, Special Education? I have, you have here that there are 17.8 FTEs. How many of those are teachers and how many of those are AAs?
I just need to get that information.
Page back.
Okay. What's that here? I do. They're not just teachers. The professional staff also includes a team facilitation leader or TML. Just had to add that.
Placing that position.
Yes. The TML is the person who facilitates IEP team meetings. It works, pardon?
And the whole evaluation process.
Right, and she facilitates... She facilitates the process from the preliminary process right through the evaluation process. It works with the Special Education Team.
Is this a special educator per se?
She's a special educator, but doesn't provide services to students.
So, this is a full-time position?
Yes.
It's needed, a full-time position?
It is needed, but actually, this person is split. She's .5 for Breslin School and .5 for the Brown School.
But the budget does not reflect this year?
It actually does. It's just not... It does. I actually highlighted that on my sheet because I thought the same. But Deirdre and I met today and reviewed your FTEs of professional staff, and it is reflected in the budget.
Great. It also includes five special education teachers. A .5 speech and language pathologist. A 1.0 speech and language pathologist. School psychologist. Occupational therapist. Now, I have mentioned five special education teachers. Two of those special education teachers are considered ABA teachers, supporting the children on the spectrum. And we have a .5 BCVA, who is a board-certified behavior analyst. And she is shared between Breslin School and Moulton School.
Where are the AAs? Those are also part of that 17.8 number. So, Christina just gave you the professional salaries of 9.5.
And then, I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.5 instructional assistants. And the reason why we have a .5 IA is because we share an ABA flow, so to speak. And that ABA IA is shared with the Brown School. So, the additional FTE of .5 will be reflected in the Brown School, whether...
Do you have any working with the... In school, the classes are classes.
Yes. Well, the reason we have a flow is in case we have, for example, if the instructional system is going to be absent, this is a highly skilled assistant who is able to adjust any of the needs of our ABA children between the two schools. So, she supports both schools when instructional assistants with an ABA program are absent. She also supports the ABA teachers in working with students and collecting that data and so forth, in assisting with all the paperwork that is involved with the data collection.
The other piece that you're not seeing, Dawn, is that Breslin School has many more than 7.5 instructional assistants. They actually have 14 and a half total. But I carry seven of the instructional assistants in one of the special entitlement grants. So, it's not in the local budget because it's covered by the entitlement grant.
So, the total is 14?
The total for Breslin School for FY13 is 14 and a half.
Is a, I'm looking at this busy homage to the issue, is a decrease in FTEs? And that's those IAs?
Yes. Four IAs are shifting to the Moulton School with students going from 3rd to 4th grade. And that other decrease is the part-time, because of enrollment, we were able to reduce the speech and language pathologist from full-time to part-time.
So, that .5 reflects a year that you talked about. You said one speech and language pathologist in the halftime, not the .5.
I just mentioned Ken, I was mentioning about the movement, Brown to Breslin, I'm trying to person out, Brown to Breslin, Moulton.
Sure.
Not enough to go through the detail, but just, maybe just general.
My question actually jives with that in your explanation. Could I get in, I understand what ABA stands for. But could you get into the skills of a special ed and an ABA?
Sure. ABA stands for Applied Behavior Analysis.
That's what I did not.
In case others didn't, yeah. It's a very highly skilled methodology of teaching students through incidental teaching, discrete trial, learning. It's typically done one-on-one, and it's for students with significant impairments. And we have two teachers in this building who are trained in ABA, provide services to students on the spectrum. One teacher provides it more in a substantially separate setting because these are students who, if it were not for this program, would be in private placements. And you've heard me do a cost benefit analysis before to a teacher versus a tuition at one of these ABA schools.
Could you possibly give some examples of the impairments, not necessarily the difference people are training to?
Sure.
Maybe a little bit of an indication on the cost of outside placement.
Sure. Melmar is a school that comes to the top of my mind. It's in Andover. It's well sought after by parents with autism. It is an ABA program. They do one-on-one instruction as well as small group. One tuition for one student to Melmar School, day program only, is $95,000. And that doesn't count, take into account transportation. So, busing the child from Newburyport to Andover twice a day could cost you $100 a day. If the student is significant enough, a child with autism has significant impairments in behavior, social interaction, and some of these students require a monitor on the van. That costs you over $200 a day for the root and monitor. So, you can see already for one student...
So, that's $18,000 to $36,000 for the education.
Absolutely. So, you're looking at $136,000 for one student to leave Newburyport to go to Melmar. By bringing in-house our ABA teacher, under the supervision of the BCVA that Christina described. The BCVA, the board-certified behavior analyst, is the person who writes the programming for these discrete trial programs. Her position is collecting the data, analyzing the data, charting the data. And that's what drives the programming that these students receive in that one-to-one setting on a daily basis. Some of these children have significant communication impairments, might use a communication device to communicate, or a picture exchange system to show their choice-making. I mean, these are truly some of our more significantly impaired students. So, one teacher educates those most significant impaired students, mostly in the room that'll be toured in the 1st grade wing. Those kids are educated one-on-one most of the day. But where they're able, they're integrated and moved to peers to specials, adaptive physical education, lunch or the recess program. And then, our second ABA teacher works with the kids who are a little higher functioning than that and are able to spend more time in the classroom. And she provides an inclusive ABA experience. She may bring her ABA programming skills to a classroom. So, while a student's in 2nd grade receiving English language after math support, she's doing her programming within the context of the classroom. Those kids still may need to come out for social skills, pragmatic language, all those other areas that a student on the spectrum has difficulties with. But she's doing the same kind of work, the same data collection, the same charting, the same analysis, and then the programming. Functional behavior assessments is something else they complete, which takes a look at why a student exhibits the behaviors that they do and determines what the manifestation of that behavior is. So, is that student exhibiting these behaviors for attention-seeking? I mean, it's a real in-depth process. And without the staff that we have providing the services, we wouldn't be able to educate them successfully to make progress and be productive members of our community.
I understand that.
And...
14.
Thank you. 14 this year between those two teachers.
And I would just like to share a word to you. Is it okay if I do about our ABA program? Okay. When I first became principal here, we did not have ABA here. The program was only at the Brown School. And here, approached me one winter day and said, Christina, it's time we expand our ABA program. And at that point, we had three elementary schools, Brown, Breslin, and Kelly. But the program and the number of students involved was growing. And the goal was to have the children in their home school, in their neighborhood schools, is what I'm trying to say, even though we're not really neighborhood schools. And, you know, I went down to the Brown School. I went down a number of times, did a number of observations, got to have a better understanding of what it all means. And we went from there. And we established, and the program grew. And it's been such a rewarding and learning experience for me to see the progress that our children make in the ABA program. It's one of the things that I've become extremely passionate about because I can see how we are engaging our children in the community, how we're engaging them with their typical peers. Chrissy Berry has created an inclusive learning environment for some children in her classroom this year, who are, one child is a part of the ABA program. And to see this child flourish as a 1st grader, she is bright, she's vivacious, she brings a lot of energy. The typically developing children learn from her each and every day, and she learns from them each and every day. And that happens throughout our school. It's amazing.
I have to tell you that Newburyport has earned a reputation for its ABA programs. I get calls often from other districts, how do you do it? Can you see it? Can you share your success stories? I also get many phone calls from parents of surrounding communities. Do you have school choice open at your elementary level? So, you know, one of the things we're finding is we are attracting a lot of school choice because of the special ed programming that we have.
And are these all the students who are eligible for Circuit Breaker?
Well, I was just going there.
Okay.
You have also heard me at this table talk to our legislators about rewarding, if you will. It's not even really rewarding. It is paying Newburyport four times foundation for our in-district ABA programs as opposed to three times foundation, which is your current Circuit Breaker formula. Because we're keeping students in district, we're educating students at home with their peers, in their communities. And the cost of doing that is to be rewarded through additional Circuit Breaker funding. So, you've heard me, year after year after year, advocate for that additional funding on behalf of Newburyport.
Most of our in-district students who are eligible for Circuit Breaker reimbursement are students in our ABA program. And I've done a lot of training with the IEP teams on how to accurately reflect their services and their service delivery rates for we can get every ounce of reimbursement. And we just audited this past year, and it was about $200,000. It was a rather successful audit.
Well, not problematically, but in terms of...
No, this was the second audit, in two audits this year.
This was a financial audit.
Correct, correct. Department of Education, School Business Finance came out for a full day, reviewed every Circuit Breaker claim that we had submitted, and calculated what we charged for reimbursement versus what they saw we were eligible to charge.
Still, we did lose $200,000.
It's very reduced because the way the law was written was for 75% reimbursement of costs that exceed the foundation, which this past year was $38,636. So, any students' costs that exceeded that, you would get 75% of that difference. It had never been fully funded. I had one year, I spent it for the past nine years, that we got 72%, Deirdre?
That's where the Newburyport this year pays out. So, we'll see.
But you heard me last night also talk about the fact that the results of the audit reflecting what we'll be getting this year, which will be baseline for reimbursement for next year. So, the Circuit Breaker revenue projection that you see here as of yesterday will increase based on the financial audit that we received yesterday. So, there's work, we've done that.
But in the end, all our good work, you can steward some special ed money, there's no incentive.
You're just doing the right thing for educating kids in their community.
Which is important. Can you shift, I want to shift back to just the overall textbook expenses. I don't necessarily have a problem, but I've noticed they've ramped up in the last couple of years. It's been FY11, and I was just wondering, and that's across Grade 1, Grade 2, Grade 3 library and instructional materials. I was just wondering if those increased costs caused at all by, if you will, the school being handcuffed because of tech deficits and that you can't use e-textbooks or something like that?
No. Within those line items, we also have consumable. For example, the students' investigations, math workbook. We also have consumable at the 2nd grade level. They have the maths and math workbooks, so we go through those every year. We have new Common Core standards, and there are recommended texts that we acquire to ensure that we have the resources to assist teachers in using the new standards. You saw in a couple of 1st grade classrooms, classroom libraries. Classroom libraries are not adequate. We need to really build those up. You saw tonight, one of our literacy closets, it looks full. It looks like we have a lot of resources. But right in this wing, we have 12, 13 classrooms that are sharing all those resources. And so, we just need to continuously replenish and add to to eventually have the collections that we need. We just don't have the collections we need.
I think we've been very, very fortunate. They have the Newburyport Educational Foundation providing thousands of dollars for our classrooms, classroom libraries. In my experience in the former district, comparing 1st grade to 1st grade, these classrooms just don't have the resources that they truly need. If you look at the volume, it's actually a number account. And you're under the comp. Not only that, they get worn and they get used.
But like I said, I'm also wondering as if as we look toward the future, and it's more if, you know, technology can get upgraded here, if that's going to just make textbooks that much more accessible, reading tools that much more accessible online, if you will.
And I want to respond to that because I think it will. But there is still something to be seen. but there is still something to be said for young children who are learning to read, learning how to use a book. First grade, we teach children how to use books, books in print. What does that mean? So we never want to lose sight, that children will always need to have rich literature in front of them. I don't want to see technology replace the book.
What is it for?
As it needs to be.
Response better to a candle, it needs to, you know...
Exactly.
Something that...
But in the same token, you could use technology, and if you were wired properly, you could get a lot of special education advantages. And bring in programs instantly that would benefit and would probably work. I don't want to say in replacement of coaches, but it would probably be much more effective.
And that's something that we're struggling with, Dan, because a lot of the independent evaluators or parents who take their child to be evaluated at Boston Children's Hospital or the Communications Campus Center in Wall Street, because of where technology is at, they're coming back with all of those recommendations. This child will need an iPad to make decision-making, or an e-reader to read text, or to have the text read to them. And I'm jumping through hoops to try and keep up with those demands. They're coming fast and furious, and we just don't have the infrastructure to support them.
I was working with a student this morning with an iPad, and this is a child that has multiple challenges, non-verbal, and really learning how to reach him and have him engage and interact with the resources around him, with the people around him. And today, I was using his iPad. He is fortunate enough to have an iPad. And he was responding to a koi pond, and to the water, and... And I was just able to see how it was relaxing him, and how he was wanting to engage with me and interact with me in a way that he could. And it was just a moment, and, you know, I was only with him for a few minutes. And it just speaks volumes to how these tools can reach our children. And the progress that he is making with this tool in such a limited timeframe, because it's fairly new to us, is really cool to observe, so rewarding to observe. That's it for the expert.
I think I need to go back to a point, and Karen, you may be able to answer this for me. When we were talking about the number of instructional aids, it appears that the Brezner hand school picks up 7.5 instructional aids in the budget.
The local budget picks up 7.5.
Right. But it's in the Brezner hand budget.
Correct.
Then, we heard that you said it, but we actually have 14.5.
Correct.
What determines whether it's in your budget or in a school budget? Because the numbers, I mean, the first number you said was 7.5, but in effect, it's doubled that.
Can I just qualify that?
Sure.
7.5 in the LEA, and then the remaining are in 94142. And 94142 is your federal special education entitlement grant that you can use for these purposes. So it's not in the system-wide budget, or it's not in any other site, it's in a grant.
But does the job description determine which...
Funding source?
So you pick a path, and the LEA picks up?
Right. For bookkeeping purposes, Deidre, Nancy, and I work very closely every year this time, many, many hours, on determining the appropriate funding source. To save a bookkeeping nightmare, we try to keep the same people out of the same funding source. So I don't have to ship, this person's out of the local budget one year, next year they're out of the grant, then the following year they're going back to the local budget. So we try to, we start there. We also go by the entitlement amount. And like Angela said, Title I, I would have to say about 90% of my federal entitlement grant is spent on salaries. So I try to see if there's room in the grant, we'll put it in the grant. If there's not, we have to provide these services per IEP, so we have to take them out of the total budget.
So maybe I'm going to ask the people that are doing budgets, where is there a page that talks about, you know, the entire staff in school? I mean, just numbers-wise, not who's paying for it, but, you know, you have 14.5 instructional aid assistance in this school. Your school budget doesn't reflect it, and where would I find that number?
You wouldn't find it in the budget document.
Okay.
Because the funding source is coming from different places.
But we have it?
We have it.
We definitely have it, because we've been prepared. So for example, when Karen and I and Nancy are working on special education district-wide, the first things that we do is say, all right, what can we anticipate our 94142 or our special education allotment to be next year? What's the trend? Trend, we're losing 10% each year, what's the trends? So it's about $475,000. So one of the first things that we do, we say, all right, $475,000, we're going to use those funds first. We're going to charge as many instructional assistants that we have in district that are associated with students on IEPs to our federal entitlement money before we hit the LEA. If the feds can pay for it, great. If the LEA can pay for something else, we'd rather do that. So that's our approach. So we have district-wide staffing by funding source. This is your LEA budget, but I certainly can present you with that larger spreadsheet that has all of it by IEP, by site, by...
If it's not too much of more work, I would just like to see the total picture in the school.
Absolutely. Thank you. Nancy and I have... Health services?
0.5?
Health services, one?
0.5? Why don't we give the aid students?
Yes, we don't actually, we have a full-time equivalent for nurses. This isn't reflected here, it's because the Brezner hand school nurse is the school nurse leader for the district. So she is our nurse for 0.5 of the time, and school nurse leader for the other 0.5. We have a nurse substitute that supports our school in Beverly's absence, when Beverly is working on her school nurse leader role. That funding comes from a grant that we get through the Department of Public Health. The substitute nurse.
I'm glad you pointed that out, it's a good question. And you'll see that 0.5 nurse leader in the system-wide budget, because it's a system-wide position. Supporting all nurses throughout the district.
On that issue, I have a couple of questions on something else as well. Is there a standard set for number of school nurses per student population?
I don't know. You mean the state-wide?
I know that the state is still remiss in including school nurses as part of Title VII's calculation.
There are guidelines, same as there are for guidance counselors for students.
Right.
But I don't believe that they're regulated, I don't believe it's regulatory.
But what is that guideline?
I don't have that.
Karen? I know that Beverly, she has that information.
So the other questions I have are really in the area of technology. I know, so, because we're talking about classroom. What percentage of your, or not percentage, how much time on average would you say each of your students spends on a computer during the week?
During the week?
One day.
I would say during the week, maybe they get on a 20-minute. Because I have three computers and I have 21 students. Then, the students who use Alexa Intervention, which is a reading program, it's part of our TI, I would say they're using it 20 minutes a day, every day, for the intervention to run successfully. It's 20 minutes a day, five minutes a week.
The... So with that, with three computers in the classroom, are you finding that all of your students are spending a resellable social computer on a community basis?
Some exposure. We also have a technology lab, which we utilize once every other week for a 45-minute block. So all the teachers in our school are going through a rotate the schedule of being allowed a computer lab every week. So they have some access to that, where they'll learn the programs, and then they have access in the classroom.
What efforts are being made to make the same software the students access in school available to students at home?
All access?
That's a good question.
The research shows, and your averages, or I write that, is a student spend 15 to 20 minutes on a computer each week in school, and they spend 15 hours on a computer each week in their home? So, as I take a look at the type of software investment that we have here, where we buy our site licenses, does that allow us to make it available for our students at home? Is this something that we've explored? Because that's the way you actually begin to make use of the software investment that you have. Otherwise, when you take a look at some of the software investment that we're doing, and we're spending about 20 minutes a week, and then maybe another period of the other week, it's not a very effective use, I don't think, of the deployment of that software.
Well, in addition to that, too, the reason we've built the schedule the way we have with teachers rotating in and out of the tech lab every other week versus every week, is to provide open lab time, so that if the teachers are working on a specific technology integration project, the lab is available. Because when we're booking it all day, every day, it doesn't allow for any flexibility. There are teachers that might go into the lab three days a week, three days in one week, to accomplish a certain project.
How many computers do we have in the lab?
It's a full lab of 24, 25.
Do we have any laptop parts?
Yes, that's a no, I'm sorry, yes.
And just think about, and I think you have a great point. It's a great one. And we heard you say earlier, you didn't have a laptop. Probably have one at home, you can't bring it here. So...
A wireless. A wireless.
Right. And so, you know, the added to, the access, the persona, everything that you do at home can come back in time here. And it's not necessarily wrong. It's just, it's a tool. And she's making use of the tools she has in the classroom. We walked around, I pointed to Angela, so take a look at the listening sentence, it's going to go. The wires, it's an old, it's something I probably used 20...
A cassette player?
Thirty years ago. You know, the listening sentence, how about the cassette recorder that was still there? See that? So, our teachers, you bring the great points, they need their laptops, Blackberries, everything at home, and they come in with a mindset, and they're happy that they have an album.
I agree. I'm just wondering whether, you know, if I take a look at the investments that we have, and I'm sure you've thought through it, and the monitors, the lights, the... Are we investing in old technology there? Would we be better served to say, you know what, let's take a look at some of the digital readers, some of the pluggles or whatever? Are they going to be able to get more use? Are they going to be more resilient? That technology that we're investing in, it's expensive to install, it's expensive to replace. It's not being used virtually. The whole concept of a desktop computer is dated.
And I feel like we're at somewhat of a standstill, because we're hoping for a new school. And with the new school, will come new technology. And how much do we invest in this interim period? How much can we invest? We have a level services budget that we're working with. It's so frustrating.
I understand the frustration behind it, and where we're going, but I think as we move forward and move towards that new school, and the potential of investing in technology, I think we cannot let past practices color our decisions that we're making moving to the future. And by that, I'm saying, you know, yeah, maybe, you know, for, what was it, I'm sorry, technology, we're talking close to $2,000, can't stop it. Really, it's not much of a thousand. I don't know how many monitors we'll buy and that we're going to replace, but I do know that Don and the high school do a great job of reconditioning and recycling and re-bringing and building new computers. You know, that is a tremendous process. But maybe we need to go back to the BBC and say, instead of a $10,000 worth of supplies a year to build new computers in the cuisine.
And guess what? The tech club is building new computers for our teachers, for teacher stations. A couple of them have already been distributed. I had a conversation with Don Skane just recently, because I wanted to know if I, rather than not just teacher stations, but if some of those computers could also be for the children. He explained to me, you know, we have to work from one platform to the other. And the need is so great for the teachers at this point in time, that we're going to focus on teacher stations.
Just as a point there. Are we working on a different platform for kids, or are we...
No. When I'm saying, when I use the word platform, what I meant was, all the teachers need new machines.
Right.
And so, we're going to focus on all the teachers at this point, versus some for students, some for teachers.
Or is it platform, right, so definitely, we've got the kids on lags, and the teachers are on PCs now.
It's just that we can only focus on one thing right now.
How much time? This is the Angela question again, I'm bringing it up on each one. I think we really need to focus on this. How much are we spending on professional development around technology? Providing them software. For example, does that include professional development to teach the teachers how to use the math support? Doing the cross-board with all math teachers?
I can see to that a little bit, I can't give you exact numbers around it. That's where our integrators are so important, when we're talking about technology. Our integrators, anything that we bring into a school new, our integrators provide professional development for the teachers around that. So, sometimes it's in whole groups, sometimes it's during a faculty meeting, sometimes it's during a workshop, sometimes it's one-on-one. So that's a huge part of their role. It's the same thing when we talk about new math software. That's where our coach comes in. Our coach will handle a lot of the professional development around those kinds of things. So, you know, after you had asked me that the other night at the school committee meeting, you know, I got in the car and I'm thinking that, how do we break that up? And all of a sudden, I started thinking about the roles of these people who carry a lot of the professional development responsibility in their specialty area. So I suppose, you know, I can look at the percentage of their job even, and say, if this percentage of their job is professional development, and break out their salary. That way, because it's a component of it. It doesn't mean that we don't provide any other professional development, but they carry a lot of it right in-house, the people we have in place.
This integrator, where is that required from this budget?
The technology, yeah, she's under the salary.
0.8.
And she's a 0.5 here, and is she...
0.4.
You have it broken, it's 0.5 and 0.5, Christina, where is it?
0.3.
0.8 here. Okay, 0.3 at the ground. She's a full-time position, but she works over the ground in Brezner hand.
0.2.
Yes, that's right, sorry. 0.2.
Okay.
Based on the population.
How many teachers would you have here?
Classroom teachers, 25.
25 plus. Are teachers, everybody on specialist school using technology as well?
Yeah. We have four Title I teachers. We have five special subject teachers. We have five special education teachers. As well as other support staff.
Okay. Just in terms of teachers right now, then, we're looking at thirty-nine teachers supported by point eight plus all of the teachers we have at Brown supported by point two. That's incredible. They are working, I can see that they're working very hard. But, you know, I think that's one of the things that we need to think about. When you think about any, any software investment in industry, it's typically accompanied by about a fifteen percent equivalent investment in professional development. And so this is what it takes to stay up to date with the kind of stuff. And, you know, we need to, I'm divided that we're probably getting really good value for money because we're not paying for somebody's profit margin by adding our internal integrators to the work. And I think that's, that's a wonderful efficient way of doing it. The question that I have is do we have the right number of resources to cover the needs?
I think probably the integrators are getting probably more than fifteen percent of those purchases of software money and that kind of thing. I think that, you know, you're getting a bigger bang for your buck. Because they're not only teaching the application, they're teaching the teachers how to integrate that application into their curriculum. You know, that's their role. In fact, good way with the curriculum that they're teaching. So...
And beyond the math component, our tech integrator here is getting highly involved in data and working so closely with the coaches around the data that we're collecting and supporting that process. She's become a member of our data team at the elementary level. It's been really wonderful to see how she has gotten herself engaged in working with the literacy team, in the coaches, in the classroom teachers to make this all happen.
It's human's work, basically.
It's human's work.
And that's a part of it. I'm trying to get a feel for it, but I'm also trying to get a, to start thinking and maybe you think of the future. Beyond what we've always done in technology, this, you know, my time always, yes, within the new school, we create a revolution that interestingly starts here, but that moves throughout the district.
We never can sustain it.
And we can sustain it. And, you know, this is one of the biggest questions about when Governor King implemented the laptop to one of these students in the middle schools in Maine. What happened with those students when they moved on to high school? They said they didn't have that tool. And so it's a challenge when we're talking about having really robust technology at the elementary school and being able to sustain it throughout the time of education. An interesting challenge, I think.
And I'll also share with you, Nick, that we are also submitting a proposal for the end app for a demonstration classroom where our teacher will become proficient and the students will become proficient using tablets. And we want to start small and see what kind of growth our students make as a result and what kind of an impact it has the student learning and then go from there.
I think that's, and that's what I was hoping for when I said, you know, two thousand dollars, even buying off the monitors doesn't buy you many monitors. We probably absolutely need to get them, but if we only had two tablets or two handles or whatever to have a teacher and students begin to acknowledge me, so I think that would be a very good investment.
Think about the professional development, technology, talk about all the professional development and also all the other consultants that are here in this building. What can we use?
Sure. In terms of the coaches, we have our literacy coach and our math coach. They may offer... They're not. They're in the system-wide budget.
They're in the curriculum budget.
They're in the curriculum budget. There aren't any...
Now, we have to use certain ones, please.
Four.
For math, literacy and math?
Two. And we only have one of the literacy coaches here and she is shared between Preskinian School and the Brown School. The other literacy coach is shared between the Mullen School and the Middle School. And the math coach is spread among all four schools.
So that one is system-wide, set budget, and another one. Other consulting studios?
We have Dr. Susan Craig. We have, Angela just made a statement, they're not consultants.
The coaches. I mean, the coaches are on staff. They're district employees with specialties in curriculum areas.
So they provide professional development, but they don't, the consultants come in.
So Dr. Craig?
Dr. Craig is a consultant that works with our entire district who is not paid through the LEA. And Karen can speak maybe a little bit about how she is paid.
She is paid in part through the LEA, through the special education budget. When I present my system-wide budget, I'll be giving you the detail. She's partially paid through my contracted services line and through the program improvement grant, which is the two seventy-four special education title grant that specifically focuses on four areas, one of which is improving and using practices in public schools. And that's how I find my portion.
What's her total?
It fluctuates between the number of days that she provides. She also provides technical assistance versus teaching professional development. She runs graduate level courses for our teachers and she also does in-service. So it varies, but I can give that breakdown for you.
She's like one course. You don't have your students to do?
Nope, she runs like a graduate course. I think it runs six sessions, Angela, is that?
She puts in six full days, at least thirty-six hours. It would run thirty, thirty-six hours totally. It depends on when we run the class. If we run it after school, it can run best a semester long, you know, a few hours in the evening, one or two days a week. And then oftentimes she will offer bleakly long courses for our teachers in the summer so that they can come and, you know, complete class in five or six days.
And we pay her to teach these classes?
We do.
Now, if a teacher decided to go to graduate school, do we pay that person to go to school?
We pay. Well, the way we handle tuition reimbursement in the district is we pay fifty percent of their tuition. We'll give them up to fifty percent tuition reimbursement for at least one class a year. If our teachers here take a course with Susan Craig, we're paying the instructor. They have to pay for their graduate credit for the class. So the teachers have to pay for graduate credit, but they set a reduced rate of fifteen thousand dollars, which is contractual.
So what's capped at fifty dollars? Is it capped?
There's a cap, there's a contractual cap. Not only is it a total amount, as well as what a teacher can, or we reimburse them here, it's eight hundred dollars.
Eight hundred dollars here. And we have a special, we also have additional money that we added last year to the budget for people who are in graduate programs to ensure that they get the full eight hundred. So that's in addition to the fifteen. We added some additional money to the budget because we had a lot of teachers in graduate programs. If you have a lot of teachers taking a lot of classes, they might only get awarded fifty percent of one class and it may not equal the eight hundred dollars. So just to make that money, you know, have that, at least that little bit of insurance if you're in a program, you're gonna get at least eight hundred. The other thing is based on our conversation on Friday, I asked Angela and I asked Karen to provide a list of consultants, non-district employees, but consultants that service the district and where their funding sources carry.
Thank you.
And we'll get that on the nineteenth during the district presentation.
Any other positions that, because this is what makes it so hard about this budget and the fact that, you know, we start looking at something and we ask questions and we go, well, no, that person's working here and there and shared here and not here. Well, no, and some of that's covered by a grant. And so it makes it really hard to understand a lot of the components of these budgets because they're written this way. I know it's probably easier because you're trying to perfect and this is the way you've been carrying the budget year after year. Are there other positions that are in this budget or not in this budget that support your school and that we should develop?
I have a few contracted services, they're not consultants. They are service providers per IEP for a student disability that there's such a low incidence. It's not cost-effective to bring that person on staff. For example, a vision specialist. I have one student, two students in this building require vision services. To bring on four hours a week of vision therapy, it's not good for us to hire that. So I've contracted that up with either a collaborative, our membership collaborator of LET or I've used the Carol Center for the line in the house. So that's a contracted position and that's carried in the contracted services budget in special education.
So do we pay for something for black people like that?
We don't pay a membership fee. I serve on their special ed advisory board and Dr. Kribble serves on their board of directors. And for us serving on those boards, we're considered membership districts, we get reduced rates for our contracted services. I also use North Shore Consortium. They do charge a membership fee. We're not part of them. I only use them if needed, but there's a little bit higher rates if we're not membership district.
And you can't get that support you need from collective?
Right. I go to LET first because we're members, so we get a low rate. But if LET can't provide that service, I'm sometimes required to go to another source.
And we also have a system-wide physical therapist that supports all schools in our system in that...
Carries my budget, system-wide professionals.
As well as an occupational therapist assistant?
Did you mention that position when you were writing through?
No, I mentioned an occupational therapist, but not the assistant that supports her and the students that she works with.
Yeah, the seven-hour-a-week position. So to bring someone on board, seven hours a week, is it possible? We contract that out. We also, in my budget, have a supervising psychologist, Dr. Elaine Savage-Creeden. Well, it's part-time for the district as a supervising psychologist and that's a requirement to provide purposeful provision to our school psychologists. If we didn't have Dr. Savage-Creeden, that would be an added expense that I'd have to contract through an agency hospital for some of the clinical support for our school psychologists for them to maintain that licensure. But again, her professional position is carried in my system-wide budget.
Just, you know, just say, everything that you heard is, actually, it's very typical. Every district has the same plan. Some districts, they have a greater need, have more grants and we, so therefore, in the money stream for many different sources. So this is typical. I think that, you know, thinking about this for next year, probably would make sense, it's the system-wide central office go first. If you really understand, you know, special education and what happens out of the central office. Try it, because we're doing it, we're doing it, it's all bad, we're doing it here. So something to think about.
We also have one more here, auditory verbal therapist that's ranked, supporting a student with a verbal implant, who's in president of school. Again, that's a medical need through IEP or private company that I've...
Contracted that out.
Actually, LET doesn't have an auditory verbal therapist. This is a private provider licensed as an auditory verbal therapist that I'm contracted with privately.
And we also have a nurse that comes in two hours a day to support my, my medical friend.
And that is a LET. Whenever I go to LET, we do. Right. And whenever I can package...
So all these total costs for these contracted services are in your budget?
Correct.
And we'll be able to take a look at that?
Yeah, I'll help that for you.
Anything else that other position supports?
I don't think so.
ELO? ELO? Yes, we do.
He's on staff, but he's not contracted.
It's a district-wide position. We have a teacher that supports our ELO students.
Is he in here?
No, because it's a district-wide.
It's a system, it's a system-wide, so it's a system-wide. I manage that position and I have a Q2 for that. When we do system-wide, I can explain the ELO.
I don't have the exact breakdown of her hours. I'd have to look at her schedule, but she services students in all three grades.
When I present the ELO, I can, of my system-wide, I can tell you the number of students in the district receive ELO services, the languages and their proficiency level because that's what drives the number of hours they receive. There were regulatory requirements based on whether proficiency level.
It's hard to have a tenured staff. The scheduling of the tenured staff, they, they don't really feel, so they have a whole base. They're here and there and everywhere. The space is such, is so limited here. You know, you have to find space that's going with the work, or when she's working with children outside of their classroom. It's a challenge. It's a real challenge.
She works too small in terms of those schedules. You know, you're working around the students, the child's schedule and...
Travel, travel, Charlie.
Have to build that in.
I understand. One of the strengths of a school, just trying to scale, you know, walking first grade, second grade, third grade. Teachers, that's the strength. If you had, you had at one time five, you had five buildings. And you can, I can imagine, I tend to, it's not like a school is a school.
Right, right. And we still do, and we still have some alternates that when I think about what happens at the grade hall now with the collaboration and the playing together, it's just incredible to see how teachers support one another and work with one another on a daily basis. I think the teachers that left the Kelly School, who were now here, were so well, well, I think about this very large school, they didn't have anybody necessarily to collaborate with at their grade hall. Maybe a grade here, a grade there, but they were single teachers. They're teaching grade three and grade...
You know, we set up, remember, it was like, well, how come the Brown gets this and the Kelly gets this and the Brez gets this and... Right, right, right. Technology, computers, staff. It was, you know, always set up that dynamic, which is totally gone now. They were having, you know, all the grade hall teachers in one site, you know.
All right. So we, we've been, this is, I think, there are other questions? We can continue. Any other questions?
Can I, can I go ahead?
I want to change gears for a second. And Christine, I know that, you know, here, Christine, you, you know, you have a vibrant cultural enrichment program. You, you know, you do field trips. Can you talk a little bit about that source of funding? Because it's not in your budget again, so...
It never is.
Well, that's what I need. And I think it's important for the public to realize that, you know, it's a vibrant part of your curriculum that is being paid from another source. That's all.
Yes, absolutely. We are so fortunate to have the New York Port Elementary PTO. They provide all, you can say, provide all of our cultural enrichment opportunities for our students. Beyond that, they provide every classroom teacher with a paid bus for a field trip of their choice. And the teachers will often collaborate together and plan to utilize as much bus, the trips as they can so that they can go on more than one field trip per year that will be paid by the PTO. Additionally, parents pay for our field trips. That's where the funding comes from. If any child who is unable to pay, I have a student activity account and I reserve money, scholarship money, if you will, to support those children. Or to support those children who are unable to participate otherwise in our PTO after-school program. We have a PTO after-school program that's held twice a year for approximately seven or eight weeks, depending on the year. Parents and children sign up for what they would like to, for what the children would like to participate in. It's a BBS program and so I will often, you know, support the needs there as well for the students. But our PTO is phenomenal. They are a fundraising machine, if you will, to support the needs of our school. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to offer those opportunities. And they also are very generous in supporting, you know, individual proposals that we may step forth to them by teachers, by me. Steve O'Leary, one of our custodians, is going to be offering a garden club. And this is something he has initiated. He has cared for many gardens within our school. And now he wants to have children involved. And he has also established February's Lacy, a partnership with Opportunity Works. And we have a garden right here at school where Opportunity Works does. And they work with students as well as the adults from, from that... And they work with students as well as the adults from, from that organization. And so, there are so many things that the PTO is supposed to be going back to the garden club.
I think this just... Just go with my own.
Okay. Sorry. The PTO also funds, funds the need to enhance and maintain our gardens that are here, our present in school property. And so, with a new school, we'll have to add many new gardens, but I would love to see if we can maintain what's already been established because they mean something.
Yes. You have a senior.
That's right, that's right.
I want to thank, I'm gonna just thank Christina and the school council. Ian, and Lea.
The oil come down.
The secretary here was, thank you, and Ken Beer for coming on a second night this week to videotape the workshop. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I think this is helpful.
Yes.
Thank you.
I just want, this is, this is fantastic. This is really, it's a wonderful idea. And I want to commend you and everybody across the table, as well as Angela, Karen, and Teeter. Both hands are long and fair.
In terms of the capacity, in terms of the format, this goes to the, this is obviously about, I don't know, usually committed. Is there anything you want to change in terms of the format?
I could have gone, personally, I could have done more of the tour. I, I, I got a lot out of the tour, blasted in the face with a lack of technology. And I'm telling you, I really think there's no reason we can't invest our money as a district in infrastructure. And families are already mind confused. I, I, I see a program in which everything you request could have something with regular school. That, that hit me right in the face. No offense to your classroom, but...
There's some taken. There's a lot out there.
We have, we can't fall behind in technology.
I'm so glad that you can see it firsthand. And I think that's when the powerful things of an opportunity is, you can see it firsthand.
Absolutely.
Thanks, everybody. Teeter, thank you for being here.